Before I forgot to mention, I'm sure the photography is aware of the protocols and that any member of the public present may not have given permission. Thank you. Agreeing in apologies please?
Apologies have been received from Mr Oxley and Mr Dech.
Thank you very much indeed. The minutes then, confirm the minutes of the meeting held on Thursday, 1st of March. Mr Dech, secondly, Scott Knight and those in favor please. Thank you. declarations of interest please. Mrs Vernon.
Thank you very much Chair. Regarding the application this evening, 2015-0125, whilst I'm not predetermined on this application in any way, my husband does occasionally carry out work for the neighbour who's objected to this and for this reason I feel it appropriate for me to be, for consideration of this item, not take part in the debate this evening. Given that this is the only item on the agenda tonight at present, I must admit I feel as excuse me from the meeting at that point.
Very happy to do so. Any other declarations? I should for the first approach to say that I have been chairing the Uppingham Labour for Class Group, the Labour for Plan House Group and its successor committee but not in capacity, in my capacity as the county councillor. I haven't had any concern with the detailed application in front of you tonight but I do support the concept in the labour of a community hub. So just to make that clear. Any others? Thank you. In that case, petitions, deputations, any questions?
Obviously Chair.
And I can forward deputations relating to planning applications.
Want to put out a statement on behalf of the county council to be presented by Mr Ayton?
Thank you very much. As usual, we'll ask Mr Gayle for a brief introduction, then I will ask Mr Ayton to come forward. We will have three minutes or four minutes for members to ask you questions and I understand because we are in further that the agent or the architect will answer any questions that arise.
Did I misunderstand Mrs Vernon, she wants us to go?
Um, yeah, I have an interest so...
Sorry, Miss Gayle. I must have misunderstood, I thought Mrs Vernon had to go to appeals before she went. No?
No.
Sorry.
Sorry, Miss Gayle. You didn't have any interest?
No, definitely not.
That's fine.
Just going up the site and the proposal before you get from the deputy. The application filed for the office for proposed extensions to the Uppingham Town Hall in High Street East. It's a split recommendation in front of you which is for approval of a proposed rear extension but refusal of the proposed front extension. And here we are, I'm sure members are familiar with the site on High Street East there, that's the front elevation. And here we have the plan view in its context. So you can see the building there outlined, the old site outlined in blue. The existing building, the original part of it is two-storey here, then there is a single story extension to the rear with a very high ridge line and there's some additional accommodation here for the police service. It is within the defined town centre, it is also within the conservation area and there are listed buildings immediately across to the west here on High Street East. Please note as well, it's set back from the frontage there, also neighboring properties and then at the rear, there is a hickory access here and parking facilities there for the town hall and the properties surrounding it are a mix of commercial and residential. Just again, the same thing in closer and then showing these areas of photographs to illustrate warranty of those actual points. So here is High Street East and then North Street East up there. You can't really see it here but it is set back from the road frontage whereas the listed building across to the west isn't and any other neighbouring property here is also close to the frontage. That is the original two-storey element here and I think you can see that with the long single story rear extension, that its ridge line is actually very high here. That is the police accommodation there and then you've got the rear car park with its access from the North Street East further there to the rear. This is the existing planned view on two levels, so the two-story element here, ground floor and then first floor, then you can see the other facilities then at the rear here, a single story extension, the police accommodation is here and the rear car park there. And then finally, the proposal that is in front of you this evening. First of all, at the rear, that existing extension is effectively rebuilt. It comes out further here to the east and that irregular eastern elevation is rationalised like so and then providing additional accommodation here and then at first floor level, there's additional accommodation across here as a result of raising the ease level of the existing extension. And then at the front, we've got an extension here, but you can see it's only single story there, there's the roof there. So that's the proposal that's in front of you this evening Chair.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Gayle. Mr Vernon, if you'd like to come forward for the microphone and your opportunity.
The deputation I will read you inside of my three notes, Mr Chair, is on behalf of the council, would normally be presented by the clerk. Unfortunately, the clerk can't be here so as Chairman of the council forced me to read you the deputation. So, the existing town hall is limited by the land it sits on and currently has a small amount of street parking which we wish to retain. In creating a new community hub, the council are looking to use effectively the space that is available and minimise the potential disruption to services during any phased period of construction work. The current building layout provides poor display space for community information and for meeting members of the public. Managing or handling events planned is difficult and invariably restricted to just using the town hall. This offers users a limited choice and restricts potential revenue for the council. The creation of another floor to the rear will enable the inclusion of improved youth facilities, potentially incorporating the library from Queen Street and enhancing other operational facilities, including the option to use the front extension to house local information and potential exhibits. This would have the additional benefit of building further on the increase in visitors to the town using the heritage trail. The front extension provides additional space to manage the transition during construction as we look to minimise any disruption to service provision. We have widely politicised our plans and sought feedback and support from the community. We have received written support from our local MP who has commented specifically on the proposed frontage, asking that it's kept, sorry, asking that it's in keeping with good materials such as stone or oak. The town council is fully supportive of the county planning policies, operational in the conservation area and we will always seek to uphold these. We respectfully submit that the planning officer's opinions, that our plans do not meet these requirements, are not shared by the public at large and we have taken great care to make the building as sympathetic as possible to the conservation area and the street scene whilst offering exciting opportunities for the building to a 21st century community hub. The frontage of the town hall currently sits behind the building line of neighbouring properties. Our proposed plans have kept the existing stone facade in its present location and we have sought to gain extra space by the incorporation of a stone and glass frontage. We feel that this is a preferable solution to utilising this much needed extra floor space than simply demolishing the existing stone facade and moving the whole building up to building line. We have also sought to assist and reassure the adjoining properties with any issues that they have raised and in particular, the business signage of ours. If successful this application, our next step is to secure funding. We are keen to have our four plans costed and funded so that the project can exploit all the site has to offer in one go rather than coming back in a fragmented approach, making additions to the building over a long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Vernon. Members, you have four minutes for any questions.
I have just completed the application by the high consultant rather than the architect, but should he answer any questions?
Thank you very much indeed. Other questions from members please? Could I just ask you one, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this directly, but on the issue of the frontage, in the pre-application discussions, were there any alterations suggested and if so, were they acted on?
I think in terms of pre-application discussions, the advice from the council has been pretty consistent that the front was a problem. So, at that stage, we did offer a number of different options. Well, there was flat-roofed glass option and when the consultation exercise was done with the residents of Uppingham at the beginning of December, it was the pitched roof with the Collie Western tiles, slate tiles on, that was the preferred community outcome. So that's why that one was submitted as part of the application.
Thank you. Mr Gayle, the additional, the front that seems to be the property in your report, unless I've missed it, what additional square metres does that give?
I don't know off the top of my head but I'm sure we can work it out from the dimensions that we've got on the plan but I think it comes out about three points six metres from the frontage of this, like this in the report.
And that will be usable space with it?
No, I think it's got to, it will have partly external measurements but internal usable space and obviously there's the steps so, yeah, it would take a bit of calving to do that.
I think probably Mr Gayle may be able to help with some subsequent point on that one. Any others? In that case?
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you for the deputation and we'll have the floor board. Thank you.
Thank you again. So, you can see on screen there, the plans are in front of you this evening. Moving on then to the key issues for you to consider. If I manage to have the microphone changed, would that be acceptable to members or not?
Acceptable for the deputation. Yes, thank you.
I do want to raise my voice, Chairman, but I'm paying my part here, please do. I was just about to take you on to the key issues for you to consider this evening. So first of all there with the proposed rear extension, three points. First of all, the impact on residential amenity of neighbouring properties. Secondly, the impact on the conservation area and setting of that adjacent listed building. And then thirdly, any impact on access and parking at the rear of the property. And then with the front extension, two issues, the impact on the street scene of High Street East and also the impact on the conservation area and again, the setting of that neighbouring listed building. So, just to remind you again of the existing situation, you can see there to the left of the screen, the two-story element and then to the right, the single story existing element there. That at the moment is a function hall but if we then move on to the proposal that's in front of you, you can see that we have that slightly larger and rationalised ground floor extension with first floor above. The first floor is now the function room with other facilities we've already heard of from the application on the ground floor. Then you can see the single story front extension there. You could look at the rear extension first of all. The issues to consider, don't worry about that for the moment, I'll come on to that shortly, but on that rear extension, I did mention earlier that it's got large ridge. So there's the two-story element, that's the single story element but you can see that the ridge is very high, almost as high as it is on the front two-story element. You can then see the ease level here on the two elevations, first of all, the west elevation and then lower down there, east elevation. It would also draw your attention to the rear elevation of that extension, existing extension and you can see there's asymmetry. You've got ease level there, there and that's the accommodation of the police service down here. It doesn't show you the two-story element on the high street frontage further back. But that's the proposed, sorry, that's the existing situation at the rear. And this now is the proposed, so again, please leave that to one side for a moment. You can see here that the new ridge line with the rebuilt rear extension is 300 millimetres higher than existing but you can also see that ease level has risen, first of all, on the west elevation to here and then secondly, on the east elevation to there. So in terms of the bulk, it doesn't increase significantly albeit it does provide that additional first floor accommodation. And if we then look at the issues that I've identified for you earlier. First of all, the impact potentially on residential amenity. There's a terrace of properties here, then there's the listed building there in residential use and then we have a mixed commercial and residential use here. That is the existing footprint, the proposed footprint rationalises things along here. The view is that the impact on those properties there is limited because it's only facing the rear extension and it is offset. The view in terms of any impact here and here, a way of overbearing impact or loss of light, is that the rise in ease level doesn't make a significant difference. There has been a comment from this property here about loss of light but of course, the sun from the south would only affect that property in the later afternoon where it is already behind the high ridge line of the existing building. And in terms of the property on this side, yes, there's quite a rise here from four metres to 5.5 metres in its ease level but set back from the boundary and with the property itself angled away, we don't think that has an impact that would justify any refusal. There is also, as you would have seen from the elevations, limited frustration so we don't feel that there is any impact by way of looking through those neighbouring properties. Coming on then to the second issue, which is the impact on the conservation. The public views are from here on High Street East, you can't really see that rear extension from there. Other public views are possible from North Street East here but as I'll show you in a moment, there is a very high boundary wall there on the limited gap here with limited views through. So we don't feel that that change to the rear elevation there has an impact on the character and appearance of the conservation area. The sides here and here aren't very visible within the conservation. So again, we are comfortable that we can recommend to you that there is no impact on the character and appearance of the conservation area as a result of the proposed changes at the rear of that building. Just to illustrate a couple of those points, that is poor photograph, which I apologise but that is the existing rear and what happens there is that we have a slight increase here in ridge height and then the new roof and over on the other side, we have, it's off-screen, we have a slightly higher increase in ridge, in use height. That, in our view, doesn't make a significant contribution to the conservation area, the changes to it are considered acceptable. Quick look down side, that is the neighbouring property there across to the east, that is the existing east elevation of the property, the two-story element at the front, the single story rear extension. The side wall would now come back here, running close to that neighbouring boundary and then from up above, that's a view across to that neighbouring property. And the final issue I should have highlighted with the rear is the proposed changes to the car park. You can see the layout there at the moment, you would have seen from the earlier drawing that that layout changes. The rear elevation also includes disabled access into the building. I mentioned earlier that it's screened from North Street East via High Ward, that's it there and yes, from new screen, that access there would be high with standards but it's an existing access point, there are no high level objections to its continued use in association with the building. So that's the rear, Chair. We can then move to the front, you can see again on there, I've shown it to you a few times already, the proposed extension there. This is the element that is recommended to you for refusal and you've got the single story element on the High Street East frontage there, there's the roof of it there, it provides some new accommodation you've heard already there and there and then in the front, in the middle, it provides new access including a lift for disabled access. Just looking at it a little bit more closely, so that's the additional accommodation you've heard about there and there, then that's the ramp and stairs here, that would then be the main entrance into the rebuilt hall. And it would go here. So the central entrance facility there, then the additional accommodation you've heard about there and there. It is on higher ground, as you can see, above neighbouring properties but it is also set back from those neighbouring properties. That is the existing situation, I've already shown you in the photograph, you can see the increased height, you can also see, I think as well there, the design detail of the existing building. And this then is the proposal that's in front of you this evening. The view of your planning officers is that that is very different and out of keeping with neighbouring properties, particularly the listed building here at the east and it also of course obscures the detailing on the front elevation of the existing property. Showing it there in more detail, one little point of detail, it doesn't the plan say Collie Western stone roofing there, on some of the other drawings I've shown you, it says there's Collie Western stone roofing here on the existing building. We have checked out only this afternoon, it's actually tiles, not a Collie Western roofing. But again, I think that shows the very different front elevation you get from the detailing that shows you on one of the earlier photographs and drawings. And again, to put it in some context then within the street scene, it is set back but you can see how radically different that is to the listed building here and also the property there across at the east. So what does that mean? Three photographs which I can use for this, I'll probably settle on this one for the moment. What this proposal would do, it would obscure the front of the building there, that makes a positive contribution to the character and appearance of the conservation area whilst appreciated there is a glazing proposal, it would still obscure that, diminish its contribution to the character and appearance. The setback would also be lost as North Street, as High Street East goes around the corner. So, the setback of that feature there is again part of that character. But what I have shown you on the drawings is out of keeping with here and out of keeping with there, those neighbouring buildings. It is not in keeping with the character and appearance of the conservation area, it is therefore contrary to your policies. I'm showing you the third slide here, again, this one offers the benefit of showing the opposite side of the street. What I have described to you going in there, very radical, radically different proposal, is not in our view in keeping with the character of that part of the conservation area. So to take you finally, Chairman, to the conclusions. First of all then, we feel that the rear extension has an acceptive impact on residential amenity on the adjacent listed building in the conservation area, there's no issue regarding access and parking. The front extension though is an incongruous element, it has a detrimental impact on the street scene and on the conservation area and the setting of the neighbouring listed building. And so the recommendation in front of you this evening is for a split decision, approval for the rear extension but refusal for that front extension. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I would like to support the principle of previous or making better use by refurbishment and where they could be down the extension to an existing building and as we've seen and heard, the rear extension doesn't seem to have any overriding objections either from residents or from policy to have because it's not going to have a big impact particularly in the conservation area because it's more akin from view to the rear and not terribly visible from North Street East there particularly because of the wall and the street on the other end. I think I would say that extending the front of any building can be problematical because by its very nature it changes the appearance of that building and the street scene and needs to be considered very carefully. The original building, I understand, was from the 1930s, there may have been a house there at one time for visitors, it's place when church wanted to build new church rooms and the front elevation, I think, has been designed to actually fit in well with the conservation area, although it needed to be the conservation area then, but with the surrounding buildings many which are now listed, I think trouble was taken to the right materials and windows of course of good proportions. It was designed also, I believe, to make a statement that this was not a dwelling, it was not a shop and it was a bit more important than that, it was church rooms and it was a public building and that's what they put on the front elevation. The use of the glass on the frontage, as we've heard, will obscure some of that front elevation, obviously it will, but to my mind, it looks more akin to a shop frontage with all the glazing that goes across there. And I don't personally believe that it does enhance the conservation area, it does look to me like an incongruous element and I have difficulty supporting this element because of that. Just looking at the floor plans, the new proposal for the floor on the round floor, there seems to be an awful lot of space devoted to quite a wide central corridor and I know we've been advised that it's not a planning authority to make comment on how the internal layout is put forward, so I'm not going to comment on what's being put there for the library. But I just wonder, before we actually consider a single story extension on the front of this building and indeed its appearance, whether any further thought could be given to whether better use could be made on that ground floor. We've heard from the deputation that the front portion is going to be used for displaying material of local interest but maybe that could be done a different way without the need for that extension. So, that's how I feel about the person as a whole and I wonder if it could be looked at in a different way that I would have to have come.
Thank you very much, Mrs Scott Knight. Other members? Mr Gayle?
I don't think, I don't want to talk about the back extension because to me, that seemed perfectly acceptable. So I was concentrated on the front area. As a committee member, I see this being a balance between conservation and providing for growing population. The design of the extension at the front as proposed, I do not agree with it, it's totally out of character although the listed building seems to be rented buildings. The building that's proposed to be extended, the town hall, I do think there is space, not space area, there is the opportunity to develop that front, similar area as proposed in a similar design, might bring the front of the problem out of the area, bring it forward and design it as it would seem to be part of the original construction. And Mrs Scott Knight said, the original building was a staple. Well, good time does move on and... Well, time does move on and we can make current statements saying that conservation can be improved and we can extend it because everything, the population is growing, the needs are growing. And I do think, although that design is quite acceptable, I do think there is a second sign somewhere. Now, we're determining this application and I will certainly go along with what's proposed. But after our members from, of being present in the audience, I hope they're listening to what I'm suggesting is an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Gayle. Other members? Just a quick up there, Mr Cross.
I would agree with what Captain Gayle said. I think this is a hugely important building. Uppingham have got a great asset that obviously they want to develop. And I think they should develop it. The rear, there's no question. This could be a fantastic resource for local people in Uppingham. There is a difficulty with the front and I think there needs to be more discussion. And I hope there is discussion between planning and the application. Because I'm sure that between you, you can come to some sort of resolution that could go away to making this development happen. Very important, I can't support the front element, but I would support another handle to the front element. And I do wish them the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Look, Mr Cross.
Thank you, Chairman. I sympathise with Uppingham over this. They're in a sort of catch twenty-two position. Again, agreeing with my colleagues, you know, the back area is fit for improvement. The front, it's not all that older building. And unfortunately, I'd be quite harsh. And I would take a ball and chain to the whole thing and knock it down and build something similar further forward. And obviously, they may have looked at the cost implications there. And, you know, I don't want to raise a fuel roll, but they're hiding to nothing if they want to try and put an extension on the front there that will meet with the criteria of that conservation area. I wish them all the very best. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Cross. Mr Gayle?
Just a quick one, Chairman, I was just... I know that there's an usual step in speaking a decision and everybody speaking in favour of the rear. Could I hear without the front element, which included some poor disabled access, how the disabled access will work on a split decision? And how disabled access would work to access upstairs? Both from the disabled parking and from somebody from the upstairs?
My reaction to that is that the proposed rear extension does incorporate a ramp for access from the rear car park. And then I also understand that within the building, there is a lift available to take people up to the first floor that was subject to a planning issue granted a few years back. So whilst I appreciate the split decision this evening and calls with that recommendation would mean that there wouldn't be improved to save that access up in front. You are with that recommendation based with the rear extension that does incorporate disabled access and there's also an existing facility for access into the first floor. So can I therefore suggest, if the members want to go along with the decision, that that part of that supporting does incorporate some new spaces, that there is still a solution for disabled access? Although maybe refusing the present application, that before the rear one is commenced, that sort of solution is more forward. And I'm sure it will do, but otherwise, we're only allowing disabled access from the rear car park here. And that building has a fairly dark, currently dark passageway and so on. I think front access should be made for disabled access by then.
Thank you, Mr Gayle. Any other members? Sorry, I don't think we need at this point to comment on that. But I'm sure when we come to a decision, we can incorporate that. I'm looking, officers. Can I leave that? Will we do now or...? I thought we did now, in that case, yes. Mr Cross?
I'm inclined to not do that, with the recommendation it is. If you impose a condition requiring them to give me disabled access arrangements for the front, and if that isn't what the town council wants to do, because it sounds like it's what the town council wants to do, that's an actual block them, enable them to get on with the rest of the building instead of a condition they either come up or don't want to comply with. The way we thought this allowed them, it allowed them to get on the plan and think about the back. And if they did need to come back, they can come back on the front. But it doesn't stop them if there is a need to, or grants predictate it, and you go ahead with the rear. So I understand that Captain King's going to come on that, but our recommendation would stay the same.
Do you want to come back, Mr Gayle?
Chair, I'm comfortable. I mean, I hope that disabled access group will be consulted on it. I just haven't met the real application. And if it is going to split, I hope before, and I'm sure if we came out, we would go ahead and consult it before, then go ahead with it. I know some disabled people take quite unkindly to having to use what they see as rear entry system as an opportunity for going in as they see it to the front of it.
Thank you. Mrs Cargill?
Mr Cargill, I'm sure I have somewhere in the report that it would be possible to put around that front. And I can't quite find it in the main document.
Mr Gayle?
Well, as I did, as I said previously, I would be supportive of a rear extension provided. It's tempting in keeping with what's there now. So I don't think the disabled access is urgent, imminently. And if this is refused, then I presume that the one-year free application is in place. So within that year, perhaps the applicants could come back with something that could be acceptable to the new council's committee.
Yeah, certainly come back, yes, yeah, in that situation. It seems that, I think everybody who wishes to comment has commented. Mayor, have a proposal, please. Mrs Cargill? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. And I'm sure that the deputation will take note of the comments. Thank you very much indeed. And right, we'll now move on to the front floor. Are there any questions, comments? Mr Gayle?
Is it confidential, 4.3 bottom line? Is that confidential coming out of what you've had about that?
That is fully answered, thank you.
Yeah, it's not confidential. There's, at the moment, the applicant checked this morning, hasn't put any claim in. So there's no summons at all. If he does, that is public domain information, so it's not confidential.
I haven't read the appeal decision, but it was a committee decision. I was nowhere with what I'm wrong.
I don't know, that's a fair question for Mr Paul. Right, you, Mr Gayle, I wonder...
Was it the lot that sort of...?
It was the car parking issue we recommended.
Oh, we refused it on the car parking grounds.
It was the 1.5 cars and then over the whole site. And not permission to the specific thing. And our line of argument, as I remember it, was that we were not happy with the lower density for that specific bit of the development. The developer was arguing that it was made up over the whole site. I think that's it.
Just a comment, anyone that's not been around that site, it's quite an education to have a walk or a jive around it. Bit of a relief inside, I don't... This way, that way, all correct.
Mr Cross?
Yes, it was actually at that same point. And I do think that we must learn from that unfortunate decision. Because I believe it was a wrong decision on behalf of the inspector because more and more people have got cars. Yeah, and we're going to have to make allowances for that fact. And more importantly, we're going to have to make allowances for bus services and emergency vehicles and our own refuge vehicles using the public highway. It is not a parking lot.
I think, again, Mr Gayle's original point, it would be interesting to know in the course of what our success committee to know. Particularly with even the fellow in the house of Cleveland. Why it should be that way, Mr Bloom?
And I take the point out, learn the lessons for the future. But I think the issue here is because this goes back to a slightly different era trying to restrict parking at Sols. And the design code would set an average 1.5 per kilometer, which would be exceeded on the development anyway overall. I think if you move forward with the policy and the new council's looking at a new local plan, I'd be surprised if I would more set all the levels, it would be in push in this day and age, to push that sort of average of 1.5. So I think we've got a bit historic element to this. And I don't think that the success accounts would like it to go the same way as we got on the first time. It's something in its era.
I might come back on that. This is entirely the fault of various government dictators telling us what people will be doing. We do not agree with that. And we know that people will not walk and use the bus or anything like that. This has led us into this ridiculous position by government dictators.
Really? Which government would that be, Mr Cross?
It doesn't matter which government.
Gentlemen, Mr Cross clearly hasn't had his supper. Thank you for that. Mr Gayle?
Just a quick one, Karen. The officers have to be right, just for accent that is. Those of you who are at the time remember that there was a then government policy that restricted in town centre type locations the number of car parks. And you may recall the debates that this committee had around developments in Northgate as well and in the area next to Tesco, the station there, and next to Tesco again, about the number. And, you know, I think at the time, we said it was too small a number. But this is history and all going on from that. The difficulty is that that developer needs to realise that the spot number will eventually need some sort of traffic control. So any hopes that we're splitting out into that spot number, I think, will be a force.
Anyone else wish to comment? No? In that case, I'm glad to close the meeting. But before I do, I would like to thank you all for your work and attendance over the past session and wish the two members who are not seeking rear action well to thank them for their contribution. And with that, I think it's just about four o'clock for seven. I think my meeting's closed. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.